Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2017. I'll begin by calling this meeting to order and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, I will go to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will go from our student advisory council into our consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2017, school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the June 2, 2017, Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting as presented?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we do have a public hearing tonight on school choice. That's at 7:45, so I'll just turn it to Dr. Smith and see if we can't hammer out some more points.
Okay, so we'll take pieces of my agenda. So first is, the Student Parent Handbooks have been on the table for two weeks. The updated copies are in this week's packet. Our goal was upon review to just ensure some consistency in some spots, so I think what you'll notice is that now the three different books of the elementary, middle, and high school have consistent titles. They all have the information on the first page if folks need the document translated, a consistent and up-to-date mission statement, a consistent, up-to-date nondiscrimination statement. Just made sure that the school officials and their titles were all accurate, school committee names were accurate. And then the other piece I wanted to attend to, which we did, was to the end of each book, the last piece is school committee policy. And again, for consistency, what we did was we put a hyperlink to the website to all of the school committee policies, and we list them in each book so people can see what's there. And then we call families' attention to, students and parents, to review policy and procedures in regard to life-threatening allergies in the school setting and harassment bullying and hazing. So those two specific procedures are enclosed. And then at the very end, with some feedback from Ms. Morgan, which was a great idea, I have added a statement that says, "Printed copies of any policy or procedure are uncontrolled." To ensure that you're viewing the most up-to-date approved version of a policy or procedure, please access them on the website," and then that's listed there. So I think that that kind of really helps streamline the policies. A couple of quick little things I did notice this week that are already fixed, but they're not in your packet. In the elementary book, it calls them important school committee policies. We just got rid of the word important. I think just school committee policies. So that's consistent in all three books. And the food allergy procedure was missing for some reason, so that's now inserted. In the Galvin book, the highlights all still remained from, those were just calling our attention to what was changed. Those highlights are now all out. And then in the high school book, it was mostly around table of contents and pagination and index. Those just all had to be updated, and those are now completed. So I think at this point, I'm pleased with the updated books, and I think that the accuracy and consistency are a lot better.
Please, thank you.
Move that the school committee approve the Student Parent Handbooks as presented?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any questions, discussion, comments? Ms. Fortier.
This is in keeping with consistency. I noticed that for the high school book, people were referred to just by their name, with the exception of Dr. King-Smith. So in other words, the principal is Richard Metropolis, et cetera. But in the elementary and the Galvin, they have either Mr., Mrs., Ms., and that includes us. So in the high school book, we're not Mr. or Mrs. or Ms. And I think, I don't see the Mr. or Mrs. Ms. as necessary. The only time that I think it would be probably more appropriate would be for an earned title like doctor, or reverend, or, you know, because right now, for example, I'm referred to as Mrs. Amory Fortier, and that's not how I refer myself as. And so, not that I'm not a huge deal, but just in terms of necessity and consistency, I think it should be removed. Does anyone have any feedback on that?
I mean, I'll just say, I think for consistency's sake, that just makes perfect sense.
Yep.
So is it your preference to then amend the Student Parent Handbooks to include one consistent title form of address with just a person's name?
Please.
And no citation?
Yes.
Okay. So that amendment has been moved. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the books? Ms. Morgan.
I emailed you just a couple of small changes this morning. They were just typos, nothing content or context. So if we could just make sure those were included?
Yeah. Cool, good, thank you.
Anything else? All right.
I'm sorry. Just being new to this whole thing, I just have a question around whether this would be a handbook thing or a policy thing. There wasn't any, there wasn't any mention of, and it could be a policy thing, so forgive me, when students are not in school as a result of religious observances, there's no language that indicates that teachers should where, were able to not have major exams or presentations or anything like that that the student is sort of forced to miss. And I'm thinking it's not a handbook thing, but it just was making me think about that type of language that I think should be somewhere.
So I can say that I know when the school committee approved the district calendar this year, we included that language, at the very least, for the Jewish holidays.
Yeah, we did.
At the top of the calendar, it says something like, "No homework assignments, tests, quizzes, or events to be scheduled," something like that.
On the school calendar?
On the school district calendar for next school year.
For the next school year?
For the coming school year.
Okay.
That was something we added, and it's school committee approved, so that when the faculty and staff receive that, and then we always send a reminder from me and from the principals, you know, especially in the observance of Jewish holidays, because the students are in school, that there should be no quizzes, tests, homework, or events scheduled.
Right.
It's a good starting point, anyway.
To the chair, I think there is language in one of our policies around that, too. Does that sound familiar to you, Kate? But that's something we can look, we can double-check.
Well, there's certainly language in the policy on religious observance that indicates that students shouldn't be marked as unexcused, or...
That's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
You know, or that sort of thing. But there isn't any sort of recognition of, you know, what a student should have to or not have to make up as a result. I know my daughter missed a major French test on Yom Kippur, and she would have really wanted to go to school that day, but I wouldn't let her. So that was unfortunate, so she had to make it up later on.
And I would also encourage parents to contact us when that happens, because I'm, I know that the principal sent out a communication to the faculty that that was not to happen. So if that did in fact happen, we should know about it so we can respond to it. And because I agree with you wholeheartedly, no student should be put under that, in that circumstance.
Okay, great. So it is a moral policy thing, not a handbook thing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, comments? The amended motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, Dr. Smith, do you maybe want to do one more?
Okay, so I think I can get one more agenda item in before the public hearing. So summer learning included in your packet. I just talked about the summer reading program and summer math challenge and some of kind of the new elements. And, you know, to learn more, anyone can go to the website, LearnAnywhereProject.org. That website includes a lot of different things, but it does include summer learning. Kind of the ads this year was more in regard to choice and personalization, so that we can really meet students' individual learning styles, needs, and interests, trying to get more into passion-based learning to really inspire kids' love of learning and in their participation, both in the, for a choice book, for example, and in the product, you know, in regard to their book review. So in the coming years, I've been talking to the curriculum leaders, and we would like to expand our summer learning programs to include science, technology, engineering, history, world language, the arts, and more. In coming summers, this year, there is a touch of science in there for the first time as well, which is exciting. I really do want to thank the BB Library for their participation. They're so essential. And certainly our ELA and math curriculum coordinators and our library media specialists for their assistance in putting it together. So for the summer reading, there is a common reading experience across the Wakefield Public Schools, and we ask all of our students to participate in the common reading experience, because when we come back to school, students will be involved in a summer reading discussion day. Students can choose their own book, and it's offered in a variety of formats. And then students are invited to, we're calling it React, Share, and Connect, in preparation for that discussion day. And students have a variety of options for how they can share their reflections and experiences with the reading. And really connecting to the plot, the themes, real-world connections that they've made. The high school students have even a broader range where they can, instead of just doing a book review, they can do their own book talk online, they can do, create a video or a podcast, or do some artworks, a lot of different kind of means or forms of talking about their reading experience. In summer math, we have a lot of fun activities, as we did in the last year or two. And we're, you know, suggesting that students complete an activity a week, but they can really be done in any order, any time. If someone's away for vacation for a couple of weeks, and they want to wait, you know, until a little bit later, they can certainly do that, too. A new element is students can click on Contact a Coach, and we have faculty members that are willing and able to help kids in the summer if they're working on their math and they need a little bit of help. And then for kids who can't get enough, there's a link for additional daily math and science brain teasers. So a little something for everybody. And as always, we like to have some prize incentives, so, you know, we really want to inspire kids to read a lot, not just their common reading experience, but read as much as they can, and to participate. So any student who submits any kind of a digital book reflection, a review, or a reflection following a math activity, they'll all be entered into a raffle to win some fun prizes, including iTunes gift cards and so forth. And we usually recognize some of those winners here at School Committee in the Fall. So that's what's happening this summer for summer learning.
Any questions from the committee? Okay. And Dr. Smith, I think I'll just take it back from you now, so we can go into our school choice public hearing. So is there a motion to enter the school choice public hearing?
I make a motion that we enter, I make a motion that we enter into the school choice public hearing for deciding our school choice for school year 17-18.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. This requires a roll call. Judy, did you want to call the roll?
Mr. McRae?
Yes.
What exactly am I doing?
So we just need to verbalize yes or no in terms of entering into a public hearing to talk about school choice.
Oh, gotcha, okay. All right, didn't know what I was voting on. Yes. Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Tiero?
Yes.
And then Mr. Mathis?
Yes. Okay. So we're in our public hearing. I don't see anyone from the public who wishes to speak, so I'll just turn to Dr. Smith and ask for her recommendation.
So my recommendation is that we do not become a school choice district. We have not been a school choice district. Largely, the decision is made on enrollment and available seats. And so I included in the packet for everyone to look at our projected class sizes and enrollment for the coming school year. I think to provide quality learning experiences, I think our class sizes in most cases are kind of at a just-right spot, and I think I would be very hesitant to enter into a school choice agreement.
Any discussion from the committee? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, school committee, accept the superintendent's recommendation to not be a school choice district in 2017-2018.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Passes, thank you. Okay. And now I just believe we need a motion to exit the public hearing.
I make a motion that we exit the school choice hearing.
Second.
Okay. And that's also a roll call vote, I think, right? Okay.
Mr. Leeuskas?
Yes.
And then Ms. Fortier?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
And then Ms. Tiero?
Yes.
And then Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Dr. Smith, back to you.
Returning to my agenda, so next in your packet, I included information on new regulations for educator evaluation. So you may remember from our discussions earlier this year, there's been an ongoing conversation about student impact rating at the state level. So I just wanted to give everyone an update where everything landed and ultimately was passed. So in your packets, I included just a two-page snapshot of what the new regulations looked like, a few changes, just to make sure, you know, you've heard a lot about DDMs, you've heard about Standard 5, you've heard about student impact rating. So just kind of want to make sure you're mostly just up-to-date with the language and what's happening. So basically, the separate educator impact rating, or the educator's student impact rating, has been in fact eliminated. And I think we all thought and could see that that might be imminent, and in fact, that did happen. And what happened is the student learning and growth data is now incorporated into Standard 2 with a new indicator, Indicator 2C, called student learning. So basically, instead of having a separate rating for student impact, that has now been incorporated into Standard 2. And I included the regulatory language for what Indicator C student learning looks like. And it really just talks about a key, a few key terms, you know, basically that the educator demonstrates anticipated student learning gains based on multiple measures of student learning growth and achievement. Measures must include student progress on Common Assessments and where available statewide student growth measures. So that's what the new language says. So on this two-page, I just gave you a couple of quick definitions, what those things mean. Basically, your anticipated student learning gains are the expected rate of growth for a cohort of students. You know, you kind of have a range of growth that you would expect over a year's time, and those are your anticipated learning gains. Multiple measures can be any combination of classroom, or school, or district assessments, both commercial and homegrown, and also by regulation, the MCAS student growth percentile must be used where available as a data point. Common assessments, and I put in parentheses here, formerly known as DDMs. So they're kind of dropping the DDM language, and at the end of the day, it's really the same thing. A common assessment is a formative assessment that's across, consistent across a grade level or content area. And it's something, an assessment that is in common among teachers and students. They're identical or comparable assessments of student learning growth or achievement. So they're connected to the curriculum frameworks or other relevant frameworks that we use. So just kind of get used to using the language common assessment instead of DDMs. The measures of student learning and growth are any quantitative or qualitative measures that we identify to use as common assessments. And so we've changed our title from Standard 5 to the WPS Guide to Student Growth Measures. Same thing, nothing in the content has changed, it's the title. We dropped and named Standard 5 because it's no longer the separate student impact rating. So there's no need for a separate standard. So we just changed the title to a guide of the qualitative and quantitative measures that we use in the Wakefield Public Schools. You'll note that all educators will be using Common Assessments in their PLCs, and where the MCAS is required, they'll use that. And we'll be using some of our exciting new qualitative measures that we've identified along with classroom measures. And later, you know, coming this summer or early in the fall, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the target student growth measures for the Wakefield Public Schools that we've really identified. The district leadership team has a full-day retreat tomorrow, and that's a big chunk of what we'll be working on. And then I also just wanted to let you know, I thought of this while I was reviewing this for tonight, Doug Lyons, my assistant superintendent, and I are going to be doing a presentation at the MAS-C, MAS-S conference in November. We're going to be doing a presentation on the growth measures that the Wakefield Public Schools will be using, basically the formerly known as Standard 5, now known as the WPS Guide to Student Growth Measures. We're doing a presentation on that at the MAS-C conference. That'll be really nice. And that's it. And on the last page, I just included the new regulatory language about how we evaluate educators using this information. And when do we start? The new regulations will be implemented in the coming school year 2017-18. So that's the update on that. Just want everybody up to date and on board.
Anything from the committee on that? Any questions?
So there's a lot here, and I appreciate the clarity with which you presented it to us. There's one thing that I'm still struggling with. I thought I understood what, I thought I had a good understanding of what district-determined measures were. As you, the definitions, could you distinguish between multiple, the category you described as multiple measures and common assessments? And when we say common assessments and you say identical or comparable, do you mean within the district, or with other districts, and across districts in Massachusetts? I'm just trying to clarify those.
Yeah, so when we say common assessments, we mean within the district. Right. And so the language the state was using was district-determined measures, meaning that a school district would determine the measures that they would plan to use across grade levels or content areas. What we might have in common is if we use, for example, at the elementary school, if we use a nationally-normed assessment, like the Ames Web Probe for Literacy, that might be something that a neighboring school district may also use. And we're using nationally-normed data, so those are commercial assessments. Typically, in elementary school, there's a little more of a use of commercial assessments, where you tend to, as you move up into the middle and high school grades, and different content areas, you tend to do more kind of homegrown formative assessments, if that makes sense. So when we talk about multiple measures, we're really talking about an array of common assessments. But you can also use classroom measures, you can also use the qualitative look, the rubrics that we've developed. So you can really just use a lot of different data points to look at student growth and learning. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. Dr. Smith, I have a question on the, what was formerly known as Standard 5. The new title is a Guide to Student Growth Measures. Is that actually a document? Is that actually a booklet or a pamphlet? Is that actually a guide of some kind?
It is. So it's basically, so it looks, it's exactly, it looks like Standard 5. It's that I've shared with you and can reshare with you in its new form. But all that really has changed is the title. Within it is a description and some information, and then it's the rubric of all of the different indicators from multiple measures of learning and growth that we're using in the Wakefield Public Schools. The reason, again, we changed the title was because when there was going to be a separate educator impact on student rating, impact rating, then we had a separate, so we could use it as its own standard. And now we don't really need to do that. But we are still using all of those growth measures, as they are now integrated into Standard 2. So really, all that's changed is Standard 5 was a document and continues to be the same document, just with really a new title.
Okay. If that's something that you could share in a new form, I'd certainly be appreciative in reading that, especially as it's introduced into Standard 2. Any sense of, well, I guess it's way too early for any of that, but I was going to say, any, because this has sort of got some prominence around the Standard 5, you know, element outside of Wakefield. Any feedback from other districts that they have sort of assimilated it as well?
Yeah, so I think that one of the reasons we were asked to present at the MAS-C conference is people are really interested in the work that we're doing. So I think we're kind of still on the presenting tour, if you will, and sharing our work, kind of a tour. But I think there's a lot of interest in it.
Okay. I would hope to think so, and certainly would see if that. One of the things about having it as its own is that it was separate and distinct. I don't want to, you folks really put a lot of work into developing that standard.
Well, I think that the...
I don't want it to be lost in the...
Right, right. And I think when we talk about integrating the work into Standard 2, it's still its own standalone document, so, you know, our goal is that it will not become lost in that integration. And I think it's still really, really important, because people are looking, when you look at multiple measures of learning, if you remember back when we've talked a lot about it, we, you know, our teachers', you know, ratings, their evaluation should be based on more than just two discrete test scores, if you will. You know, there's many other things that are happening in the classroom on a day-to-day basis that are critically, critically important. And you'll notice when we, when you do look at our target growth measures, that we're going to be talking a lot about student dialogue, student discourse, students talking about their learning, exhibiting their work, and presenting their work, which is such an important skill today. And right now, there aren't really any common assessments per se that really measure those. So what we've developed in the Wakefield Public Schools is a way to really, to look at that and look at student growth over time in those areas. So I think that we'll continue to highlight that and utilize and share that document with other people. But certainly, it is not our intention for it to get lost in the shuffle, now that it's being integrated. And really, this, a lot of this was about the fact that this rating was separate, and I think a lot of educators are relieved that it's no longer a separate rating. And I think at the end of the day, I don't think it changes the work in any way that we're doing. It just really is about, at the end of the day, whether it's a separate rating or a rating that's integrated within. So I think we're okay, and this will end up working out just fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, and really, the last piece on my agenda, other than the other comments, is I'd like to invite Jason Levine, our district mental health coordinator, to come up and just help share with you a draft of a strategy for social, emotional health and learning for the Wakefield Public Schools. And I brought a hard copy, just so you could look on, in case you didn't have your packet with you today. But Jason's just going to briefly give you a quick overview of kind of how we got here, and why, you know, what we're doing with this draft, and then we're really hoping that the bulk of our time could be just Q and A and really just talking about it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you for having me, thanks, committee. As Dr. Smith and I sat down really last year, at the beginning of the year, we started talking about where our different district initiatives related to social, emotional health were at, and really began to talk about our plans going forward, we realized like anything without any coordination to it to begin with, there really, we had a lot of really high-quality programs, but no real distinct vision and language to drive those programs as we move forward. And so Dr. Smith and I really thought about it, and we brought in Brendan Kent and Catherine Dingra from Athletic Department and our town Board of Health, to talk about all of our district initiatives, and talked about where we felt our programming could have the biggest impact, based on the several initiatives that we had. And that's where we really began to establish our vision and our theory of action. And as you see it at the top of your paper, from that, once we had the vision and theory of action established, and mind you, this is language that we worked on several times to really get at what we wanted to say, really about where we felt like, how we wanted to prepare our students. And then we began to really build... And then, we began to really build our three main objectives from that, to be able to steer our theory of action and our vision moving forward, and then began to take a look at what initiatives did we feel like were in, were most prominent for us to be able to begin to take those steps forward? What were the things that were going to begin to build the foundation of these objectives? And as we've laid it out here. So, our next steps are that we're going to continue to develop our action plan to continue to drive these objectives. And also, in the coming year, we're developing a social, emotional, learning leadership team with representatives from each of the levels to begin to monitor the strategy and be able to give recommendations to the team about how we move forward.
So, any questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Lea?
This was, it was really great to read this. Maybe for the viewers, read the theory of action, right? Maybe just so everyone can hear it. So, "If we promote emotional and mental health, cultivate safe, welcoming, and healthy schools, and develop responsible and resilient students, then all students will successfully access learning and confidently navigate their world." I think that's well said, especially interesting. I'm just thinking about, you know, that first, in the first objective, promote emotional and mental health, and the first bullet, the first number under that objective is, in some ways, the most important, right? Expand educator knowledge in practice in social, emotional, and mental health topics through training and professional development. And I was just thinking about what a significant challenge that is across the district, because essentially, what we're saying is that we're going to ask of our teachers, largely, but also our administrators, to enhance a very, very, you know, a set of skills that they're going to have to put in practice that are complex and difficult, and in some ways, adding what, to what is already a complex and difficult job, right? So, maybe talk a little bit about that challenge and what that looks like across the district.
Sure. And it certainly is a challenge. I would say it's a challenge that all school districts are facing and have begun to realize of how important it is to have a coordinated and structured approach to those challenges. It is something that, in years past, many people may have referred to emotional, social, emotional health, referred to the clinicians as the ones that were the bearer of these tools. And really, through research and through a lot of hard work and really understanding, people are coming to the realization that our teachers really are where all of the work gets done. Our clinicians are very skilled and have some great tools in our toolbag, but our teachers are where, we have the biggest impact on our kids. And if we can equip our teachers with the right skills to support our kids' mental health and social, emotional well-being, then we're going in the right direction.
And we've actually started already, under Jason's leadership, this school year that just ended, every faculty had Mental Health 101 workshop, and it was Elliott, Community Health Services, with Jason, came in. And Elliott did a presentation, so that we know that every faculty member in the Wakefield Public Schools had this 101 course. So, that was kind of laying the foundation.
As well as it will be incorporated into our new teacher training program.
And then, yes-
I was just going to say, it probably shouldn't be said, that in a way, this is actually not new, right? I mean, we know that teachers have always been conscious of the social and emotional health of their students, and always conscious of the impact of those things on learning and sensitive to those things. But what we're talking about is, in a way, a kind of a higher level of consciousness and practice around it, right?
Yes. And some training with some real, like, putting some of those tools in our toolboxes of all teachers.
Absolutely. I would say it's really sharpening and reinforcing those skills, and really making a directed effort to hone those skills.
In this, in the school year that just ended for our paraprofessional staff, during the five-part series, they were able to be trained in mental health first aid, which is really, how many hours is that, Jason?
It is a 10-hour class.
A 10-hour class. Over the five-part series, all paraprofessionals received that training, and we're going to open up mental health first aid to all faculty and staff as part of the five-part series. It's a choice option next year as well. So, these are the ways we're going to start kind of chipping away at some of the training that we need to roll out.
Yes. We also, this year, did a community mental health parent forum hosted at Wakefield High School, where we had about 60 to 70 parents come to hear a speaker talk about anxiety signs and strategies to help your students throughout all age levels. It was a really, really well done.
It was excellent. Very well done.
Yes?
I have a couple of teachers and parents. You know, teachers do a good job, but as far as discipline, sometimes, I know in Galvin, when I was a kid, wasn't very good. I don't know if high school's gotten better or worse, but they were always decent. But sometimes, they try to discipline a kid, or if they see someone crossing the line, or, you know, just being really disrespectful, they're not sure if they get the support from administration. Can you maybe talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I can speak directly with my experience at Wakefield High School. You know, the clinicians are very frequently involved in working with our administrators around supporting our students, whether it be a question around discipline, or whether it be even just, I had this interaction with a student today that I'd like, I'd like someone to give me some guidance or bounce some thoughts off of. One of the great things about Wakefield High School is the open communication between clinicians, teachers, and administrators. If there's a concern, it's brought forward and it's addressed, as opposed to sort of trying to just wait to see if something happens.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, just to my other comments, so a few things. First, I want to acknowledge this evening that many of you have probably received the news that Commissioner Mitchell Chester passed away today, and just really profoundly sad about that. It was unexpected. I think all of us were very shocked. And, you know, Commissioner Chester, you know, had such a passion for quality education for children in Massachusetts. He was very big on equity for all children, and just a fierce advocate for that. He had very, very high standards and pushed all of us and pushed schools and school districts, you know, to do good work. And I think one thing that was just really neat in the last couple of years, he was very impressed with the Wakefield Public Schools, and really kind of became a big fan and an advocate and a supporter of ours. I had shared that with you. And then, of course, his, he visited the Wakefield Public Schools on March 1st. He was at Dahl Bear, and that was probably among his last school visits. And we really just had an amazing time when he was here. So, I think we'll really miss him very much, and I would just like to, on the behalf of all of the educators and families and students in the Wakefield Public Schools, you know, thinking about him interacting with the children at the Dahl Bear, I just want to extend our heartfelt sympathy to his family and friends and colleagues. Second on my other list is, just an update to the committee, that we are engaging in two principal searches right now for Walton and Dahl Bear. In the last 48 hours, Mr. Lyons and I have hosted two parent forums and two faculty forums. They were both, one of them was just tonight, right before I arrived, and just such thoughtful voices in our communities about what they're really looking for in our new principals. We did a lot of resume screening, we're booking candidates, you know, the master plan is underway, and I will keep you posted as that continues. And then, I had two things in your packet I'll just call your attention to. One was the, just the kind of exciting visit in August. Just I was really, I was really pleased that the Department of Education reached out to me recently to let me know that Representative Justin Woodson of Hawaii is visiting Massachusetts. And I learned, I didn't know this, but Hawaii has a very different structure, and the state legislator, legislature has direct oversight of education, unlike most other states. And so, he is the Chair of the House Committee on Education, and he was hoping to come out to Massachusetts, learn about mass school ed reform, kind of learn about some of the strategies that have been most impactful, according to Desi's opinion. And Desi called Wakefield, which is great, and said that they, that wanted to know if we might be able to host him. So, they're going to do a session with him in the morning, and then, after lunch, he's going to come out to Wakefield. And I just invite committee members that are available. A couple of you have already emailed me that you'd like to participate, but would just love to organize a day where he kind of visits a school or two and has some conversation with us and talk about what we're doing in the Wakefield Public Schools. So, I just thought that was pretty exciting news to share. And then, finally, the last thing I just, I included, as we wrapped up the year, it was really quite a year for the Wakefield Warriors. I don't know if you read my notes, but from Mr. Brendan Kent, but, you know, Wakefield really tied with Woburn in the most league titles for the school year, which I thought was pretty cool. So, eight league titles, which was amazing. And, you know, really, a shout-out to our boys lacrosse team, who just had an incredible year with 20 wins, just to the one loss, which was their best win-loss record in the history of the high school. And we have yet another Coach of the Year, the high school boys lacrosse coach, Andrew LaValle, has been selected as a Coach of the Year. So, I thought that was really neat. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that as we wrap up the great year in athletics. And that is it for me. Thanks to you.
Excuse me. Budget items. Mr. Pfeffling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, last meeting, two weeks ago, we put on the table user fees and activity fees. And just to recap where we are with that, during the budget process, it was one of our budget initiatives, was to find a way to reduce the activity fees and user fees that our families pay in the Wakefield Public Schools. With the assistance of Dr. Smith and Mr. Mayo, we were able to budget in $90,000 into the FY '18 budget, which represents about a 20% reduction in our user fees. So, you know, certainly appreciative of the school committee, the budget subcommittee for their efforts in making sure that this happened, as well as the board of selectmen, the community who came out to town meeting and went to a lot of our budget forums to express their interest in making sure that we could find a way to somehow reduce the fees. So, as part of the packet, you will see that there is a lower fees in athletics, marching band, and winter color guard and percussion, as well as performing and visual arts, which includes the drama, student clubs and student activities. And all of those areas were reduced by 20% for both the high school and the Galvin Middle School. And then, we also have the, we'll have motions this evening for the Doyle Early Childhood Center to increase that tuition by two and a half percent for FY '18, and transportation to increase that by $10 for each round trip and a one-way pass.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffling. So, we're going to have four motions now on the user fees. And I just ask for Mr. Markham's help.
Certainly. Move the school committee to reduce user fees for fiscal year '18 for athletics, marching band, winter percussion, winter color guard, from $275 to $215 per activity, with a reduction in family cap from $825 to $645 for this combined grouping.
Second. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Move the school committee to reduce the Galvin Middle School user fees for fiscal year '18 on drama from $50 to $40, and the Science Olympian from $100 to $80.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Move the school committee to reduce Wakefield Memorial High School user fees for fiscal year '18 on performing arts groups from $150 to $120, and retain the family cap of $300.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Move the school committee to reduce Wakefield Memorial High School user fees for fiscal year '18 on clubs from $50 to $40.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Pfeffling, do you want to talk at all about Doyle tuition?
So, throughout the budget process, we analyze salaries and supplies, services, utility costs, all those things. And certainly, salaries went up by about three and a half percent across the board for the entire district. So, we felt that two and a half percent would cover a small portion, or a portion of those raises for those teachers who are in a tuition-based class environment. So, that's where the two and a half percent came from. We wanted an increase, but we felt three and a half to cover the entire teacher raise was probably a burden on the families of Wakefield. So, we set that at two and a half percent.
Great. Thank you. We have got one motion on the Doyle.
Move the school committee to increase Doyle Early Childhood Center tuition for fiscal year '18 from $6,250 to $6,400 for five-day, full-day, $3,125 to $3,200 for five-day, half-day, from $1,875 to $1,920 for three-day, half-day, and from $1,250 to $1,280 for two-day, half-day programs.
Second. Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Markham.
I just wanted to add to what the business administrator said with regard, one of the other things that we, we, the budget subcommittee, were discussing around this, was that it would be most reasonable, as costs continue to sort of peak up each year, that we at least add something. So, there is, as has unfortunately occurred in the past, when you need to make a big jump, we're not making a four or five percent increase, that it's, it would be more methodical and perhaps more affordable to families to make two and two and a half percent increases, as opposed to not doing an increase for three or four years, and then having to all of a sudden have a higher escalated fee. So, that was another part of the discussion, that we didn't feel, we did felt strongly that, as Michael said, the three and a half piece wasn't within the affordability range, but to stay current. Also, I would add, the administration, this would be something I'd probably say later, but so I'll just take a moment now. The administration, and Michael in particular, did a really good job at comparing other districts for public preschool, as well as some of the private entities in the community. And we are either well, are within the range or under range for full-day, five-day, you know, year-round, no, school-year-round programming.
Ms. Morgan.
Just so I understand, I feel like last time when we did have that larger increase, we added, I think, a music program to the school. And this increases to cover salaries? I just want to make sure they're not covered, those salaries are not covered in the local budget, too? Like, we're not double-dipping for the salaries?
So, when we build the budget, we build all the positions into the budget, all the revolving account positions, that include the Wakefield Academy positions, the salary positions, not the hourly positions, the grant positions, IDEA, everything that comes out of our IDEA grants, our MECO program, all those salaries that have come out of the MECO program. We build them all into the budget. And then, on the last page of the budget, I back them out. And you can actually see that in the budget, there was $350,000 backed out of the budget for salaries. Last year, we backed out $325,000 from the Doyle. So, we're not going to make up $25,000. Actually, we'll make up the $25,000 with this increase. So, that increase from 325 to 350 in the budget of what was backed out for salaries is equal to what the user fees will generate over the next year. So, they were, everybody's actually adding to the budget, so we can actually see what we truly are spending in salaries-
what we truly are spending in salaries and programming and everything else. But then, we back out what comes out of a revolving account, so we can get to the town meeting number that we presented this year at town meeting. So, does that help?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. So, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you.
And then, just around the transportation, just to give you a little history, when we went from FY '15 to FY '16, a couple of years ago, we had to go out for a new bid. Our current bid with our provider was up, was a five-year bid, it had gone through the full five-year cycle. So, when we got the bids in, we expected them to come in high. We knew from our analysis throughout the whole previous year, what other districts were paying, what their increases were. That year, we experienced a 27.5% increase from our regular-day transportation provider. That was a one-year increase. Every year after that, it's been between 0.5% and 1.5%. So, somebody might ask, why are we going up $10 a person? We've also had to add a couple of afternoon-only buses, and an afternoon-only bus cost is about $25,000 a year to operate. This increase by no means is going to offset that, but it does help our local budget to offset it. If we truly were to pass those extra bus costs on, our fees would be substantially higher. So, we did absorb most of the increases in the local budget. This is just a way to help offset, A, the increases from the contract from one year to the next, but also the increased ridership. And, you know, it's great that the kids or our students are using the bus service, it helps the families out, but at the end of the day, the ridership has dramatically increased since I have arrived in Wakefield for the last five years, that it's just amazing how many, every year, we're like, we need to add another bus, Dr. Smith, we need to add another bus. And, you know, I think we've done a good job of curbing the overcrowding, and trying to get all the bus, all the students. When I first got here, there was a middle school bus, a high school bus that actually went to, all the high school buses went to the middle school in the afternoon and picked up kids before they started going. So, we had anywhere from grade five to grade 12. And for the most part, we've eliminated that, with the exception of one route. We still have one route, that's a shared route, and we'll look at that every year as we go forward. But, you know, this is a modest $100 increase, but, you know, it doesn't come without us acknowledging that, you know, it is a burden on the families, and it's also a burden on the district, the cost of transportation these days. Every district is, it's a main topic at my Masbo meetings, is what are we going to do about transportation costs continue to skyrocket, so.
Move the school committee to increase student transportation fees for fiscal year '18 from $330 to $340 for a round trip, and $220 to $230 for one-way transportation.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Leakos.
Just before we end this conversation around user fees, it's worth, a couple of things worth mentioning, I think. One is to, again, thank town meeting and the town for the support and the budget for our fiscal year '18 budget that allows us to reduce most of the fees that we considered tonight. But the transportation issue reminds us that, even with that, we have all of these other fixed costs that often require fees, and that, you know, that controlling those is a constant struggle for us. And, you know, the cost of living and cost of operating, if you will, continues to rise in many of these areas, and so it's a challenge. So, just wanted to make those remarks, I think, just to contextualize these votes and how important they are.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll just briefly echo Mr. Markham's comments. Thanks to the administration, and especially to Mr. Piffling. The Finance and Facility Subcommittee was not light in the requests that we made of him, but he certainly met all of them. So, thank you for that, Mike. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Markham.
Well, in addition to what we just spent the last handful of moments discussing, at the last Facilities and Finance meeting, we also heard updates on the Walton project and on the high school feasibility project. But we also spent a good time listening to some reports from the Facilities Department over some of the summer work, and we're certainly pleased to see that some of the summer work was ready to go, or is ready to go, as soon as the July 1 sort of bell hits. That really saw some good planning on the part of Ms. Rayo and her team, and obviously the Business Office as well, for getting them ready for that. So, looking forward to some of that work being, you know, being done. And also, just sort of a wrap-up to thank the members of the Facilities and Finance Committee for what has been, I think, a very productive year. We took on a lot of tasks individually, did a nice study piece around user fees, and had a really structured conversation, which I thought was very healthy in the middle of the year, leading into the budget process. So, I was pleased to be part of that committee, and pleased to be able to lead it in the last year. And I just want to thank the full committee, as well as certainly the members of the Finance Committee, for bringing us into a pretty good place for fiscal year '18. With some ups and downs, and some bumps and bubbles, but that isn't uncommon in the world of public financing. But certainly, great thanks to everyone, thanks to the committee for its support, and also echoing what Mr. Leakos said, to thank the community at large for its healthy attendance at things like our public hearing, and certainly a very vocal support coming into our town meeting. So, we very much appreciate the support of the community. And I think that is entirely reflective of the good quality work that the school district is doing, and the schools are doing for the children and families. One has to follow the other, and I think that's certainly the case, and both of those things are, you know, are evidence of each other. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Okay. Labor and Personnel has not met. Policy and Planning, Ms. Morgan.
We have not met, but I received a text from Mr. Callanan this morning, that he had some feedback on the policy we were supposed to vote on. So, I would recommend that we postpone this vote until he is back and can share that feedback with all of us.
So, if I object, I'm not going to, we'll just keep this late on the table. Great. Okay. Future dates and agenda items. Next school committee meeting will be July 11th, 2017. School committee comments. Mr. Massey.
Yeah. I also want to congratulate the school committee, and Mike and Dr. Smith, job well done on reducing those user fees, in a pretty timely manner as well, so. And Budget and Finance Subcommittee, great job. I know that's really going to relieve some stress off the families, and even the following year, too, some more stress is going to be relieved. So, it's going to be nice, and they're going to appreciate it.
I just agree with what Mr. Massey had to say.
Mr. Leakos.
Oh, no comments from me. Thanks.
Ms. Fortier.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Markham.
All set, thank you.
Okay. And I am all set as well. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we...
Oh, I'm sorry, can I stop you just one second?
Of course.
I just forgot something. So, WCAT does a lot for us when we meet here, so I want to give them a plug. June 29th, they will have movies by the lake, they're going to be restarting that. They're going to be showing Ghostbusters on June 29th. So, I just wanted to make sure the community's aware of that.
The new one or the old one?
1984.
Ah, the classic.
So, some school committee members will clearly be there. Okay. The car will also be going down, too, so it'll be, it'll be a great testament to everything great that WCAT does, so I hope we all go. Okay. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. Move the school committee adjourned its meeting of June 27, 2017.
Second. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Thanks, everyone.